I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bradson, would you please call the roll?
One second. Eight problems.
Oh, eight problems.
Okay, Mr. Emmettance?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Ms. Buckley, she say here.
Mr. Christensen?
Here.
Mrs. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Dobus?
Here.
Mr. Means?
Here.
Mr. Nagel?
Here.
Mrs. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Workmeister?
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. It is our pleasure to welcome some special guests to our meeting this evening so we can publicly recognize them and thank them for their generous support of the Bethel Park School District and our students. For our first presentation, we want to thank Mr. Dave Hotelling of WW Granger Incorporated. Mr. Hotelling is a parent of two students at Franklin Elementary School, and he approached our gifted elementary program coordinator, Lisi Yost, about her interest in receiving a $5,000 grant from the Granger Foundation to be used to purchase a coding and robotics lab for our elementary gifted support program. This grant will be used to purchase coding software, robots, and other programming tools to create a steam coding and robotics mobile lab that can be transported and used at all of our elementary schools. Mr. Hotelling, thank you for your generous support of the Bethel Park School District. Through your generosity, students at all five of our elementary schools will be able to experience and perhaps develop an interest in coding and robotics. It is my understanding that you have a check to present to the district this evening, and we have a certificate of appreciation for you as well. I would also like to invite elementary gifted program coordinator, Mrs. Yost, to join us up front for the presentation, and at this time, would the audience give a round of applause to thank Mr. Hotelling for this donation?
So, just briefly, this is, you know, one of the enjoyable things I get to do. Granger's been around since 1927. We started in Chicago. Actually, William Wallace Granger started actually out of the back of his car, and then within 15 years, we had about 15 branches to support, you know, our growing customer base. And one of the interesting facts about our company, even though we're now based in Chicago, Illinois, is the very first branch, even though it was in Pittsburgh, was actually in Philadelphia. So it's kind of close ties to Granger for the Pennsylvania state, and it's one of the more enjoyable things that I get to do along with everything else. So I'd like to present you guys with this check for $5,000. I always like giving out the oversized ones for you. We really like to be able to support, you know, our community organizations that we, you know, live in and work near because we understand that as we're one of the larger suppliers in the area, and some of you may never heard of Granger until tonight, but we basically sell maintenance, repair, and operations equipment to keep all of the businesses and commercial operations in the area and across the United States running. So with that, Mrs. Yost, I'd like to present this to you, and I guess we'll do the...
The district is pleased to acknowledge the receipt of another grant as well. This one is from the Upper St. Clair Bethel Park Rotary Club, and this grant will be used to purchase one of two friendship benches that will be placed in a corner of the Washington Playground for children who either do not want to participate in recess activities or perhaps just want to sit and make a new friend. Washington Principal Fred Pearson was encouraged by Washington Parent and Rotary Club Vice President Danielle Gosnell to submit a grant application to the Rotary for one of the benches, and we are pleased that Mr. Pearson's application was favorably received by the Rotary Club. Mr. Pearson and Washington Adaptive Physical Education Teacher Linda Graney received the check for the bench at the Rotary's April 11th Night of Giving event. The Washington PTO also generously purchased a second bench and paid for the shipping of both of the benches. The benches are valued at $663 each, and we greatly appreciate the support of both organizations to help with this wonderful addition to the Washington Playground. With us this evening are Rotarians Susan Hicks and Russ Bukusa. Mrs. Gosnell could not be with us this evening because this is the due date for her baby, so we wish her family well during this exciting time. We were also hoping to have our Washington PTO co-presidents with us this evening, but unfortunately neither of them could be in attendance. We will make sure they receive our certificate of thanks for their outstanding support of this project. At this time, we have certificates of appreciation for the Rotary Club, and we hope that you will convey the district's appreciation to your membership for this generous donation that helps promote kindness and inspire friendship. Will the Rotarians join me up front for this presentation? And will we give them a round of applause?
I don't know if I need the microphone or not, but it's great to be able to partner with the Bethel Park School District. I know from our night giving, Bethel Park organization received $20,000 from the Rotary Club, Upper St. Clair Bethel Park Breakfast Rotary. Gotta be careful, it's Lon's Rotary. And we encourage you to have, look around your district, look around your community, and next year we'll have opportunities to provide more funding. And just as a small commercial on October 5th is our main fundraiser, which is our Chicken Barbecue out here right over Upper St. Clair. So please support the group, and the money will come back to you.
Can I just add one thing? I haven't been there in years, but the last time I was able to speak here, I was a principal in building three. Many, many years ago. So this is fun to be back.
Wonderful, and we welcome you back. Thank you.
If you've been following the local news, you know that the Art Institute of Pittsburgh has unfortunately closed its doors after many years. But the fortunate news is that the Bethel Park School District was able to benefit from the closing of the school, thanks to the donation of items from the Art Institute to two areas at Independence Middle School. The IMS Library was able to receive many items, including over 100 books, book processing materials such as pockets, labels, covers, and date due cards, a spiral binding machine and materials, an electric pencil sharpener, two reception chairs, 13 rolling folding chairs, and a laser scanner. Our family and consumer science students also benefited from the donation of items, including professional dress forms, an ironing board, a professional steaming iron, fabric, trim, shears, thread, fashion decorations, wire supply baskets, bulletin boards, chairs, and tables. Both librarian Mrs. Heasley and family consumer science teacher Mrs. Fontana were extremely appreciative and excited about these items, which will definitely enhance their programs. We were hoping to welcome Mr. Charles Dottori from the Dottori Companies to our meeting this evening. The Dottori Companies are overseeing the closing of the Art Institute, but unfortunately, Mr. Dottori's flight was delayed, and he is unable to be with us. Instead, representing the Art Institute is Bethel Park Parent and former employee of the Art Institute, Mrs. Kim Turner, as well as Independence Middle School Principal, Mr. David Minch. At this time, I would ask Mrs. Turner and Mr. Minch to join me up front to receive the certificate of appreciation, and again, another round of applause for another great opportunity.
He did move a lot of furniture that day. The building was quite hot. But I do see the curve. I want to think, I do still work for the Art Institute. There are still eight school buildings, so any student who are looking for opportunities in Bethel Park, they are still around. I happen to be in Georgia, Florida, Texas, and Virginia.
They just have to go out of town to find them.
Also with us this evening is Bethel Park Police Officer Joelle Dixon, who is also our School Resource Officer. Officer Dixon is here this evening to give us a brief update on some safety issues. Officer Dixon, the podium is yours. And someone didn't recognize you because you weren't in uniform, by the way.
Before I came here, and I just didn't have time to change, so appreciate that. Thank you for having me. Like you said, my name is Officer Joelle Dixon. I am a Bethel Park Police Officer and the School Resource Officer here. This is my second, halfway into my second school year, almost half, almost into this full second, so I just want to give you a little bit of overview of what's going on. The Bethel Park Police Department and the Bethel Park School Administration, we have a solid collaborative approach when it comes to security and safety, and I just want to commend everyone from our staff, our principals, and school board and administration. We've really had a really good experience in putting everything first. I will say that the teams that we have in place with our school officers, Bethel Park Police, and our school district, there is no ever putting anything on a back burner. We work nights, weekends. I don't know if there is any time, any evening I haven't had a phone call from somebody or we weren't working out a problem, because with technology today, with safe to say and emails, we get a lot of issues brought to our attention, even late at night, and, you know, everyone who's talking to me late at night knows that. But, you know, even the expense of their own personal time, everyone is putting it first, and we resolve issues sometimes at 2:00 in the morning, sometimes at 11:00, sometimes at 7:00, sometimes while you're in the middle of watching your kids' sporting events. So I just really want to say that we appreciate the work that everyone works with us, and these aren't the days where we can say, "Let's just wait till tomorrow, and we'll deal with it then," and that's not happening. And I know it's frustrating because a lot of times, the sensitive nature of what we deal with in families and problems and the things that arise, they can't be public record. So that's frustrating, I understand, but I'm here to assure you that everything 100% is being worked out in a very timely manner, and we're there really to help solve problems together. So I just want to talk a little bit. Since last summer, we'll start with that, we hired our new school officers, and they have been absolutely wonderful. We have gotten our classrooms, we got our buckets and some other safety mechanisms into our classrooms to make that a safer place in the event of an Alice, a lockdown perspective. We also redid our traffic pattern. Safety starts from the outside of the school, and by keeping our traffic flow in the morning, A, it's safer for our kids to be walking in the morning from their buses, and I know it's a little bit of inconvenience and it's a little bit of a learning curve, but I will say we had a lot of positive response from the community, and there's a learning curve, and most people, you know, were very compliant, just took a little bit, a couple weeks, but I will say that if you look at every morning when I stand out there, it is absolutely wonderful. And subsequently, you're training your kids, because they're not used to cars coming barreling down at them now, that they're going to be looking differently, like, "Oh, that's someone who shouldn't be there," and we get a lot of those reports, and we're able to deal with them. And our goal is to, when you come into our campus, you are seeing that this is a safe, secure place, and we're not going to tolerate anything. We've been working on the exterior security, and we will continue work on it. For the inside, we had our training for all staff and Alice again last summer. After that, we did hit some publicity. We got calls from agencies all around the country, even some that were affected by themselves by school shootings, and they want to know, "Hey, what are you doing? We like your ideas," and they've asked to send templates, and the officers called to collaborate with us, and it was very complimentary. Our staff was incredible, how they received the information, they participated, they asked questions. I mean, they are very receptive to, hopefully we never have to use any of this training we're doing, but they are prepared and they're in 100%, so I'm very proud of them. Not only to our teachers, we do all of our staff, including our bus drivers and anyone in the district. We also put the Bethel Park School Police Policies, and I will say, we're probably one of the first districts to actually have them up and running, and we continue to get calls on our officers and our program for a template by many different agencies, and very complimentary. I was at a retirement party with a lot of very respected officers, and they said, "You guys are leading the standard, you have the standard for the school police." The job has changed, unfortunately, but we are rising to the occasion. I'm very proud of my police department and the police department here at the school district. We developed building safety committees, we increased our Alice drills to twice a year. We are currently working with Allegheny County Emergency Services on a reunification drill, and we have gone really good at the run, fight, hide part of Alice, but now it's like, what if we had to leave the building for some reason, not just, you know, an inactive intruder, but how do we work reunification? So we're going to keep practicing that. We know that in an emergency situation, you will fall back to your training, so we are going to have a drill this summer in conjunction with the county to practice the actual reunification to make sure we have full accountability, that all of our little precious children get home to their families, and that we have full accountability. That's been a project going on year-round. We've had many meetings, and like I said, it's been everything from the municipality to the school, and it's just, it's very, very, everyone's all in, and I'm proud. Our training, also our emergency operation procedures were updated, and we've been training the staff in them to just kind of, again, luckily, we don't have a lot of emergencies, and we'd like to keep it that way, but we also want to make sure everyone's prepared if we have a flood or some things that we did have to deal with, and I will say that we had a really good response. We're also, you know, going over with our students, the rally points, and where to go in case they have to leave the school, and there's a lot of different kind of things we're doing, and then we also have our safety committee meetings where we're going to talk about our goals for next year. So although we're proud of what we've done, we know that we can definitely keep doing better, and we're completely prepared to, you know, see what we can do next and make sure that we are practicing what's already in place. You know, we have talked in discussions about approving our security cameras, including some that we use here in the municipality of Bethel Park with, through the Allegheny County District Attorney's Office. We have six of them in our, the Bethel Park Police Department purchased, including 12, we have 12 plate readers and six overhead cameras that we've invested in, and they've been a huge tool in our investigations. Good cameras can cut down investigative time very drastically, and these cameras, you can ask any officer in Allegheny County who's using them, they'll say it's one of the best things that's happened in our careers. In 19 years, it's a great product, and it's really helped us cut down, they're a high quality with a license plate reader, so, you know, we're looking, we're in the process of looking into that, and, you know, it's something that I look forward to. Like I said, we personally use them, and we're very, very satisfied with them. We also had Act 44 approved facility assessor from Allegheny County Emergency Services come and start our building assessments. We do assessments on our own, myself and the officers, but we brought in a gentleman from Allegheny County. He's done the high school, and he's done NAMS, and we're scheduled to do the rest of the schools. The process scheduling, the county had some conflicts, they had to cancel a couple of the things, but we're going to reschedule those, and myself and the other school police officers, we continue to go to updated training. We're really, we're working very hard, and, you know, it's difficult because sometimes Bethel gets a negativity vibe because we are doing our job, but I will have to say that, you know, I'm very proud of what we're doing. So I want to thank you guys, and we're looking forward to next year and continuing how we can approve and, you know, making everyone feel safe, because how can you learn if you don't feel safe?
And we're proud of what you're doing also.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out.
Do anyone have a question?
Yes, please. I actually have a couple of questions. One, I guess for you or Dr. Pasquale directly, there's been a lot of talk about threat assessment training. Have any of our professionals been through threat assessment, a formal threat assessment training program like what the Secret Service offers?
Yes, I have, I've been to the training, and then we, some administration staff and myself, did another webinar training here at the administration building, so I went to the Secret Service training. Yes.
I believe you have also...
I attended the webinar that she was referring to, where somebody who had quite a few years of police experience went through the general process. That was the training I attended.
Okay. The other question is either for you or the proper administrator, we're talking a lot about the hard security, but when you're talking about threat assessment, when you're talking about security threats, a lot of the information I've read says mental health is a key component, and I know we've taken a lot of steps with the mental health component also. Can we discuss that a little bit with the audience and let them know some of the steps that we've taken in that arena?
Sure. Just share some of the partnerships that we've engaged in this year and some things that we expanded upon. So we expanded our social workers, that was one thing that we did, by half of a employee in addition to what we already had. We partnered with The Borough on a program called Outreach, which offered both professional development and offers the availability for students to be seen in a counseling format there. We partnered with a Dr. Ventura who runs a practice in regards to working with students with behaviors. We had a contract with her. We also, I'm very proud of this, Lori Sutton did a lot of work on it, and it's been one of our goals to get school-based mental health available to us, which she worked very diligently with the county, which is really at no cost to the school system or the, you know, it's county tax dollars that are being utilized. So we worked hard, and we have that in our buildings now, in many of our buildings, and are looking to continue to try to expand. Recently now, we're going to be having SAP training for our elementary buildings for both some of our staff members and our administration. Mrs. Sutton's working diligently on doing that as well. So those are some of the highlights. I don't know, Mrs. Sutton, was there any that I missed there? Probably a couple, but those are some of the major highlights of some of the things just in this year. Arborley is who we partner with for our school-based mental health, and they also are SAP coordinators. Mrs. Ford, yes, thank you. Yes, we're working on it. Thank you for that contract. Kind of just looking at, it was kind of interesting, just one comment on that, Mrs. Ford, at our Wellness Committee meeting, where it was interesting, we have student representation there, and they kind of had been mentioning the issue of mental health and stress and how we could work on that. They had many positive things to say about their experience so far in working with Mrs. Ford, and they've also said, made a lot of positive statements about some of the presenters that we've been able to bring in to work with our kids to talk about stress management and mental health. So it's definitely a huge component, and we realize that as well, and I'd also like to put a little plug in that I think, you know, our officers along with Detective Dixon do an excellent job of not only just enforcing safety, but really building rapport with kids, which I think is important. They go to a lot of events, they're involved in the schools, and I think kids feel comfortable in working with them and their resources as well, so.
I have two questions. On the news the other day, there was a whole, their whole expose about Bethel Park and Big Brother is watching, and is that something that the police department?
Are you referring to the bathrooms?
Huh?
The E-hall pass?
The electronic hall passes, yes. Is that part of what you...
I have no part, you know, that's a building policy or anything like that, so to answer your question, as far as, I did not, I don't really know much about the E-hall. I mean, I've learned, I've actually gone to the bathrooms, and the teachers are explaining to me, so I've been learning the process of it, but as far as Big Brother, and I'm only going from an outsider learning about the...
Well, that's the way it was characterized.
Yeah, well, and I will say flat out, because as a person who holds a lot of information, like when I'll talk about the law enforcement aspect, that we know what's reported on the media is sensationalized in a lot of ways. So I know that, I've talked to the teachers and learned how, but as far as Big Brother, it's just accountability, I think other schools, districts use it, but we don't, I don't have access to it. I don't, yeah, so I don't know if that answers your question, but yeah, I think just a lot of times...
Yeah, it does. I wondered if the police officers were tracking the students through this.
No, I mean, I don't know if the school officers have access to it, if you, you know, but I do not, the police department does not. It's not something that we would need to, you know, we don't enforce, we as Bethel Park Police within the school, you know, policies that are school district policies, really, I'm only there for the training and any of the actual, you know, primary school violations and, you know, and even dealing with, you know, anything acutely if anybody is threatening their, you know, their own selves and stuff, but yeah, we don't have access to that.
Just a couple, you know, statements on that. I know that Dr. Jan Sanning, I know at the high school, was looking at a possible pilot of doing this at some point, and I think that's what he's trying to do, is roll this out and see how it goes, in my opinion. It's just a pilot program, and basically it's looking at utilizing an app, whether it's on your phone, Chromebook, or teachers use it, it's not necessarily mandatory per se that you have to do it. If you don't utilize it, though, it seems like the teachers will log this to see the effectiveness. Between himself and Mr. Ryer also made some comments about being able to get some effective data as to who's using, you know, the restroom or who's going where. It also tracks, for example, going to your locker or those kind of things, and kind of keeps an eye on the past. So that's something that's going to go live, and he's going to kind of take a look at that, and if it's something that really, after getting feedback from everyone, that he thinks it's something we're going to pursue, then we can, we can look at considering that there would be a cost next year for that, but at this given point, that's kind of...
Just sort of like a pilot?
Yeah, a couple of clarifications.
It just got out publicly somehow, but it blew up into the news.
Yeah, I, you know, I was unaware that, to be honest with you, it was going to be in the news, and to be truthful, I mean, I, there was some mention of it, but I was, you know, I think he was just trying to look and trying to pilot. Couple of things, I think, in speaking with him, that he was trying to say to clarify, though, you know, in the program, there's no limit on, you know, four-minute limit or something like that on how long you have to use the restroom, that was something that was mentioned. So he did clarify that, that that was not the case, you have more time to...
And you don't take your Chromebook or your phone or whatever into the restroom with you. It's the idea that it's replacing a pencil and paper task that is currently being used, like a clipboard where you sign in and out with an app that you would type in to your Chromebook and say, "I'm going to the bathroom at this time, and I returned at this time."
So I think his goal was to basically just see how I'm pilot the program, that's what he had indicated to me, and he'll see how it goes throughout the course of the next couple of weeks, and if it goes well, he'll talk about whether that's something he'd like to recommend to myself, who would then recommend to the board whether or not we want to continue to do it.
Thank you for that information. My other question, you said something about six license plate readers and something else. Could you explain that to us?
Yeah, I was just, we had spoken to a representative from a camera company that is the same company that we use for Bethel Park Police in our municipality. They're very high-quality camera as far for external, for roadways, external cameras, and they also, like ours, have license plate readers, so if you have a robbery, we are able to look up information very quickly and is able to zoom in on simple details in order to help us for investigative reasons. Now, these things, license plate readers can only be read by law enforcement, they cannot be read by civilians, administrators, you know, it's a law enforcement tool because we're licensed, you know, to have access to that through our police powers. So we use them, we've invested them for our Bethel Park Police Department, and, you know, I believe we'll continue to invest in them. They've been a huge help in as far as tracking down crimes. Catching a crime in progress is very difficult, you know, because something happens and then someone flees, but when we have really good external cameras, we're able to get a vehicle description, get a person description, get a license plate. Someone may say, "Oh, it was just a red Dodge Ram." You can able, you know, you are able to search just for that very quickly, and the detail is just very crystal clear. In law enforcement, I've been a police officer for 19 years, our biggest criticism will be a lot of people in small businesses and even large businesses, they invest in security cameras, and a lot of times, they're really hard to extract, they're not always the greatest qualities, so you'll see a grainy, and I'm sure you've seen them on the news, a grainy picture of someone, it's like, can anyone help identify? Well, it could probably be any one of us in this room, because, you know, cameras, it's the angle that they're put, the quality that they have, and the ability to retrieve that information that really helps us cut down our investigatory time.
So it's not something we're in charge of, it's something the Bethel Park Police is invested in?
Your school officers also would be able to have access to that because they're sworn law enforcement officers. So the overview cameras themselves, the administrators could see, because part of it is just an overview camera of the external area, and then there's a separate camera that's a completely separate system that you're logged on, you'd have to be a law enforcement officer to see anything that is actually reading license plates, you'd have to be logged. But the Bethel Park School Police Officers are still in law enforcement. Police Officers are sworn law enforcement officers and they'd be, have that ability also.
And these are going to be placed around our campus, is that what you were saying?
Oh, we're looking into the idea, or I, that was a suggestion that I believe that some other people had brought. And then I, I was speaking to the fact that we've been using them, most of the agencies in the South Hills and Allegheny County. And according to the man who did our presentation, other school districts are starting doing them. With Black, with Bethel Park High School and IMS, we really only have two, we could lock down two points of entry to really get a good picture of who's coming on our campus. You can, there's a lot of tools that go with these cameras that if you were worried because somebody had a PFA against one of your staff members, you could put that in there, not you, the law enforcement can put that in there. So you'd be alerted automatically if somebody was coming on campus who's since been banned from there through the license plate. So it has a lot of tools and technology so to put in, to be notified in the event that something's happening or to go back and look. And also the police department would have instant access to such a thing. So if a school district, if the high school called in the event of an emergency, our dispatchers could be looking real time as to what's going on in the external, for it. They're very high-quality, the actual camera placement is very conducive to how we conduct investigations in order to, because a, a grainy camera angle isn't going to be able to like get a solid case on somebody. So we're really able to get a lot of information, just a really high thing. So, you know, I, I believe it's something that, you know, we might want to consider a look into.
So the, the police department already has six, but we're talking about whether we want to, the police department wants to purchase more for our campus?
Yeah, so it would be partial, partial costs might be paid from the district attorney's office and partial would be paid from the school system if we wanted to do that. We don't have the exact cost because we would write in, to them, and then we would see based upon our plan after meeting with them, if we have your support, what the shared cost would be. I mean, generally speaking, we, he, he couldn't quote us for sure because that's not his decision to make, but it would be probably, probably half the cost we'd have to pay somewhere in and around there. And then we'd have reoccurring fees, you know.
The municipality of Bethel Park will continue, we already purchased six overhaul cameras and 12 license plate readers, just the police department and the municipality, we continue to, we will continue to buy more.
You need five more? What did you say?
No, we will continue to buy more because we're so pleased with the product, so we continue to budget for intersections. Because our goal is that, you know, if we have someone who did a hit and run at the, where the gecko is in South Park, that we'd be able to get that information. Or if there was a robbery, you know, we were able to get that information or, you know, any type of child luring or different things. So we're very pleased with the product, though. We're investing in it, we continue, we will continue to invest in the product. It's something that, external cameras are very helpful for overall security. So, you know, I think that, you know, that's something that we can definitely approve upon or, you know, I'd like to open that dialogue, you know, with any of you maybe at a different time too, to get some more information.
So you were saying, if I understand correctly, this would be for investigative and preventive measures?
Absolutely.
Now, when you're talking about someone with a PFA or whatever, who sets the criteria of who is flagged and how do we follow up with that?
So the only person who could actually go in and put a particular license plate in is a law enforcement officer. And then they'll have a unique log on, so it's not just, you know, if somebody is in there, I would say, and you can do an audit onto what is put on there. And there's also a list of, you know, you could do it for parking passes where you're allowing, you know, like you're, you can see that, okay, all these students only use parking passes. There's a lot of different tools, but the only people that can utilize, that can utilize that part of the program, you have to be a sworn law enforcement officer. So, and then, yeah, there, there's policies surrounding them, but we as law enforcement officer, we have policies for everything as far as running driver's license that, that it's not an arbitrary thing that you do, that, you know, part of your training and, you know, that your annual training, your certification comes with you understanding the rules, you know, and the same rules apply for license plate readers as it does for running a plate on dispatch.
So before we use this as a district, would we have to add policies to protect the citizens to make sure the wrong people aren't flagged or, you know, uh, or are they already in our school police policy?
They're already in our certifications. As to that, that, you know, it's, you know, something that we already, we cannot just, you know, you can't call me and say, hey, you know, this car was, you know, at my ex's house, can you run it for me? I can't do it. Even though I can, I can't because it's not for lawful purpose. So it, it, it's covered under that, under our professional conduct. I mean, not to say we can't put, add a policy in, you know, but, you know, like I said, we, every officer at our agency has access to it and, you know, handles, handles in a professional manner. But you have to be a law enforcement officer because of the content.
How many schools will we be looking at doing this and how many cameras per school?
I think just as a starting point, that way you can see is just the high school and IMS because of our campus, it'd be relatively easy to lock down all of the entry points for vehicles. So, you know, we've been talking about some proposals, you know, we're reviewing with my agency and the school district as to ultimately being able to identify any vehicle that drove on IMS or Bethel, or Black Hawk Drive. And then, you know, also additional overview, maybe down by Perky. So if we could get four camera locations, but each camera location has multiple views, you know, in that, in very high, and you can zoom in, you can do playback. So with that, we, we have really good cameras inside the school, especially the upgrades they've done this year. So, you know, they've really been a helpful tool to us, so if we could take that to the exterior. And I hesitate always recommending products because it's a lot of money for people to invest and I understand that. So I can just say that we use it, we will continue to use it, and we're very happy with the product. It does definitely cut down investigative time.
Yeah, could you use those cameras to keep track of suspected drug dealers or people on parole, that type of stuff, or is that something you're not allowed to do?
No, if you, if you have, if it's part of an investigation and, you know, for reasonable suspicion reasons that if, say, we have a suspect who is doing smash and grabs throughout the county. And it's not that you can, you know, we would put them in there and then we've been notified, oh, they hit certain cameras. And then we, we could work together. So, yeah, if you have, if you got information that, you know, or that you're working a, a task force case for someone with no narcotics, you can absolutely use, if you're doing an investigation. But our investigations are documented by documentation and reports. So yes, absolutely, you can put suspects in there and we do all the time and it's really, it's helpful. So on midnight, if we have burglars that are coming, you know, going, no one just stays in one town, they're going from town to town. And we'll put it in there, so then all of a sudden our, you know, dispatch, our supervisors are, and everyone gets notified, hey, they just came at Bratton Baptist Road. All right, we know that they're hitting small businesses or closed gas stations, send the patrol units out there, go filter it, you know, go look for that car because they might be coming to our town to do something. And then a lot of times we're able to put together a larger case because we track them to this town. Because all these cameras are actually linked through the district attorney's office, so we're able to get the information if they were like in a different area also.
Thank you. I have a question now, it sounds like we're done with cameras. It's on, but sort of related in a way, it's with the bathroom duty that we've had some issues and comments in the past about, you know, it's been tightened down. So just to see what your perspective was, is on the pros and cons of what had been done, you know?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so as, as far as the bathroom duties and, you know, I check the bathrooms myself quite often, I'm always talking to the bathroom monitors and the presence of having a responsible adult and to include a teacher in the hallway during class time helps control. Kids, majority of students are less likely to do something that they wouldn't if there's a responsible adult there. And I will say that just when we, you know, patrolling the hallways, when you're walking down, that you see calm, you see control, and they know that somebody's there. So I am a fan of hall monitors. I will say that signing in, I, I, I realize that, you know, obviously you can, you know, say there's cons to everything and I understand inconvenience, just like going to the airport. Security comes with inconvenience. Has the bathroom logs helped me solve, we had one instance that in less than an hour I was able to solve it and we didn't have to deal with any issues because of the bathroom log. Because it's able to narrow down our scope. When we don't know, you know, so, so yes, it's helping that, but my bigger opinion about that is I like having adults in the hallways, adults who know the kids. I, you know, you, you see them engage, you see, and we've also had teachers come and say, hey, you know what, so-and-so is just a little off today, why don't we check on them? You know, has anyone seen them? They just look kind of sad. And, you know, then they'll send other people to check up on them. Or, you know, they're like, hey, you're not, you know, not doing well. And, you know, people start, we had those type of instances where it's just like, and then, you know, you go talk to them, it's like, hey, what's going on? And then, you know, they're like, hey, I just want someone to talk to. All right, let's take you upstairs, we've got people to talk to up there. So the reporting mechanisms with it, I think it does way more good than harm. But again, I understand there's an inconvenience and, but just like the traffic coming, you know, there's an inconvenience to safety. But I, I, I have seen a complete difference with monitoring our kids in the hallway and not, you know, knowing where they are. Because if someone's walking around, then they can be asked, well, you, what are you doing? You know, or hey, you were supposed to be on the third floor of class, why are you now down on the second floor? Because we want to make sure that we have control. And also kind of help kids from kind of going askew. You know, our bigger concerns are is, you know, kids doing something that, you know, could get them into trouble or a health risk or different things. So I, I found it helpful.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I just, in closing, before Detective Dixon goes, I'd like to thank you for your support, chief's support, everything that you've done, working in conjunction with our police officers. I think it's, it's really made a difference to our school system and I really appreciate all your hard work. So I think the last thing before she does go is if the board, is that something on those cameras? And you don't have to answer today, but is that something that you would like us to start to look into, continue to proceed with?
Yes.
Because they're, we're going to have to finalize that report and letter, so we're good with that?
Yeah, one last question. For the high school and independence, that would be three cameras?
If you wanted to include Perky, just for an overall, not for a license plate reader, just because we do have an entrance there, I would say four.
Okay.
Thank you so much for taking your time this evening, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 26, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held April 16, 2019 for personnel, other legal matters and to receive information, and April 23, 2019 for personnel, other legal matters and to receive information. Staff report and Ms. O'Rourke.
I'm pleased to be able to share the following items of good news with you this evening. The Bethel Park High School.
That's okay.
The Bethel Park High School chapter of the National Honor Society inducted 94 new members, including two seniors, 11 juniors, and 81 sophomores. To be eligible for induction, students must maintain a minimum of a 3.85 QPA. Devote at least 35 hours annually to community service work and demonstrate strong leadership and character traits. Speaking at this year's induction ceremony was 1987 Bethel Park High School graduate and 2013 Nobel Peace Prize winner, Dan Fiatordi, who gave an engaging and inspiring talk to everyone in attendance. Congratulations to this year's National Honor Society inductees and keep up the good work. The Bethel Park High School hometown high Q team defeated teams from Bishop Canavan and Elizabeth Forward High Schools in one of the most exciting hometown high Q playoff games in recent memory. Congratulations to Will Martin Farmer, Caleb Shook, and Toby Ruhl, who pulled out the victory as time ran out. And good luck to the team as they advanced to the semifinals. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School junior Caleb Shook, who was one of five area high school students to be selected as a member of the Pittsburgh Region's World Schools Team. Caleb and his teammates will be competing in June at the National Speech and Debate Tournament in Dallas. The world team competition involves several rounds with changing topics every round and minimum preparation for each round. Good luck in this event, Caleb. Four Bethel Park High School students received recognitions for their excellent scores in the National Latin Exams. Congratulations to sophomore Zachary Rechtinwald and freshman Lily Gaston and Jamison Myers, who earned silver medals and maximum cum laude certificates on the Level Two exam. This, and, and to sophomore Declan Bruskowski, who earned a Magnum cum laude certificate on a Level Three exam. Twenty-five Bethel Park High School students, including six seniors, 12 juniors, and seven sophomores, were inducted into the National Latin Honor Society. Students are selected based on their outstanding academic achievement and citizenship in Latin class during the 2018-19 school year. Congratulations to these students. Thirteen Bethel Park High School Honors German students were inducted into the high school's chapter of the Delta Epsilon Phi National Honor Society. This year's inductees included nine freshmen and four sophomores. Inductees must have a QPA, GPA, I'm sorry, of at least 3.6 in German and a 3.0 in all other courses. Students must also demonstrate an ongoing commitment to the study of German at the high school. Congratulations to this year's inductees. Bethel Park High School juniors Jenna Chernicki and Madeline Marzina were each awarded a $2,000 scholarship from Gannon University for their project, The Effects of Moisture on Building Materials, which they presented at the Pittsburgh Regional Science and Engineering Fair at Heinz Field late last month. Three Bethel Park High School artists had their ceramic artwork pieces selected for exhibition at the Standard Ceramics High School Student Exhibition. Congratulations to senior Morgan Saunders, junior Paige Bastido, and sophomore Elena Kuric. The show runs through Thursday, April 25th at Standard Ceramics in Carnegie. Congratulations to these three talented students. Bethel Park High School recently held its annual National Merit Scholarship Luncheon to honor those students who have been recognized in the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program and their families. This year, we celebrated our three commended students, Joseph Bilske, Julia Herman, and Jerry Vargis. They were among the top 50,000 scorers on the PSAT, which they took as juniors, and it was the district's pleasure to recognize these students for this outstanding academic achievement. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park named Bethel Park High School junior Marissa Christensen its April Student of the Month. Each month during the school year, the Rotary recognizes a Bethel Park High School student for outstanding commitment to school and community. Marissa was recognized for her ongoing support of the Ronald McDonald House of Pittsburgh. Through Marissa's efforts, over $4,800 was raised since August through a series of activities, which included raffles, aluminum can pool tab collections, skating events, and a decorated Christmas tree sale. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School senior Michelle Rager, who was named the April Student of the Month at the Steele Center for Career and Technical Education. Michelle is a student in the Health Assistance Program at Steele Center. Ten Bethel Park High School vocalists successfully auditioned and were selected to perform in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's All-State Chorus, which will perform this week in Pittsburgh at the PMEA State Conference at the Convention Center. Congratulations to Jessica Abraham, Molly Hoffman, Abby Corrick, Anthony Lucetti, Caitlin Markavecchio, Colin McCormick, Kelsey Rogers, Cameron Silman, Julian Stein, and Jerry Vargis. Also performing this week at the PMEA Conference are Bethel Park High School musicians Jackson Stewart and Teresa Stupka, who will be conforming in the All-State Band. Congratulations to all of our talented musicians and vocalists. Franklin Elementary 4th grader Adele Stomenoff was named an Honorable Mention in the 2019 NASA Student Art Contest, which was organized by the NASA Langley Research Center. Adele's winning drawing depicts an alien sitting in a room, reading books about exploring the earth. For her efforts, she received a NASA exploration package, which contained a variety of NASA items, such as posters, pens, stickers, patches, and lapel pins. Congratulations, Adele. Franklin students gather on Facebook every Thursday night at 8:00 PM to hear a bedtime story read to them by someone on the Franklin staff. This activity was started by 4th, 4th grade teacher, Mrs. Mucci, for her own students, but it's now expanded to include the entire Franklin family. but it's now expanded to include the entire Franklin family. Stepping up to be the first guest reader was Franklin principal, Mrs. Dumont. It's a great way to foster a love of reading among the students using social media. Last month, we congratulated the members of the Memorial Elementary School Odyssey Team of the Mind Team for finishing in second place at the local competition and qualifying to complete, compete at the State Odyssey of the Mind Championships earlier this month in the Poconos. We are pleased to report that these students finished in the most respectable third place in the Long-Term Problem Event, and sixth place overall in their first year of competing. Their accomplishment is even more remarkable when you consider that the majority of teams they competed against were comprised of fifth graders. Congratulations to Garrett Lang, Braylon Muldoon, Michael Ryan Blessing, Jackson Hornbeck, Carolyn Murphy, and Cecilia Roberts. William Penn is wrapping up its Family Creative Learning Series in partnership with WQED. This year, twenty Penn families return to school once a week for four weeks to enjoy a meal together, and then participating in several hands-on science exploration activities centered around PBS character, Ralph Ruffman. Students and their parents had fun making predictions in their journals before conducting experiments that focused on concepts such as mixtures, material science, force and motion, and structures. The Bethel Park School District was one of thirty school districts invited to attend the ten-year celebration of Project Search at UPMC Mercy. Project Search is a collaboration between UPMC, the Allegheny County Department of Health and Human Services, Office of Intellectual Disability, Goodwill of Southwestern Pennsylvania, and the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, and provides a year-long job training program to eligible high school students, with more than fifty percent of the program's students obtaining employment at the UPMC facility upon completion of the program. Over the years, Bethel Park has had three students selected for participation, and next year, we are pleased to share that Hannah Conroy will be part of the two thousand nineteen-twenty program. At the anniversary celebration, Project Search recognized the thirty school districts that sent students to the program over the past ten years, receiving a certificate on behalf of the district's Director of Special Education, Lori Sutton, and Bethel Park High School Special Education teacher, Julie Hernandez. The Bethel Park School District's elementary schools will host their kindergarten orientations for the two thousand nineteen-twenty school year in May. The dates are before you. If your child will be age five on or before September first, two thousand nineteen, and you have not yet registered him or her for kindergarten, we encourage you to contact your child's elementary school today and get them registered before the orientation next month. And that concludes my report for this.